Good evening. Welcome to the Ogden City Council meeting for February 28, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Wicks, who should be joining us shortly. And we truly have a wonderful opportunity tonight to have the Pledge of Allegiance done by Alexis Carlson from the Girl Scouts of America. And she is from Leighton, Utah, and she'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Alexis, if you'll come up here.
Audience attention. Audience, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Audience, honor your colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you. Thank you. Well Alexis got us started off, and we now have a special recognition. This is a recognition of the Girl Scouts of the USA. It's a proposed joint proclamation declaring March 12, 2012 as Girl Scout Day in Ogden City. And it is my honor to turn the time over now to Councilmember Van Huser, who will read this proclamation.
It's a great honor for me to read this proclamation. I've been a Girl Scout since the 1950s, and I have my, all my badges on that I still have, so this is a wonderful time. This is a joint proclamation from Ogden City Council and the mayor proclaiming March the 12th, 2012, as a Girl Scout Day in Ogden City. Whereas, on March the 12th, 1912, Juliet Daisy Gordon Low assembled 18 girls from Savannah, Georgia, for the first Girl Scout meeting. Juliet believed that all girls should be given the opportunity to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually. In 1920, the Girl Scouts of Utah got its initial start in Ogden, in the home of Bertha and David Echols, which is now the Echols Community Arts Center. And whereas, since that time, Girl Scouts in the USA has become a recognized leader in innovative development programs for girls and young women. Girl Scouts of the USA have fulfilled a mission to build girls of courage, confidence, character, and make the world a better place. And whereas, on March the 12th, 2012, Girl Scouts of the USA will celebrate a legacy of 100 years of leadership, and has many exciting events planned to reflect Girl Scouts as the voice, as the voice and for girls. The advent of this important milestone provides a unique opportunity to not only reflect on the tremendous contributions the Girl Scouts of the USA have made over the past 100 years, but also to rally support for the next century of Girl scouting, both nationwide and here in Utah. Today, the Girl Scouts of the USA is the largest girl-serving organization in the United States, with 2.3 million girl members, 880,000 adult volunteers, 50 million alumni, and 112 councils nationwide. And whereas, the rich diversity of our country is reflected in the multicultural mosaic of Girl Scout membership. Girl Scouts are in schools, churches, temples, mosques, public housing, foster homes, and detention centers. And Girl Scouts believes that one girl makes a difference, but together, girls are changing the world. The Girl Scouts of the USA boldly declared 2012 as the Year of the Girl, and renews its commitment to the education and well-being of today's girls. And whereas, Girl Scouts urge citizens to help every girl in this generation to reach her full potential wherever she lives, whatever challenges face her, and however great the journey. Girl Scouts encourage Utah residents to help close critical gaps for girls in education, confidence, health and wellness, leadership, and to invest in girls. And whereas, Girl Scouts is open to all girls, grades K through 12, and girls' experiences can be tailored to her unique interests. Every Girl Scout adventure is designed to nurture each girl and encourage personal growth through cutting-edge initiatives in environmental awareness and advocacy, health and wellness, science, technology, engineering and math, creative arts, financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and leadership development. And whereas, Girl Scouts of Utah serves the entire state with membership of 8,500 girls and 3,500 adult volunteers, who provide more than 500,000 hours of service annually and are a vital part of Utah communities. Girl Scouts of Utah provides a unique experience where a girl finds courage for pushing past her perceived limitations to reach for her dreams, find confidence by discovering her strengths in a fun, girl-only, supportive environment, and where her character is shaped by learning values that strengthen herself, her community, and her world. And whereas, Girl Scout alumni are living proof of this, of their impact. This is demonstrated by the fact that 80% of the women are business owners, 69% of female United States senators, 67% of female members of the House of Representatives, and virtually every female astronaut who has flown in space was a Girl Scout. For 100 years, Girl Scouts of the USA has done more than any other organization to provide leadership opportunities for girls. And whereas, the 100th anniversary celebration of Girl Scouts of the USA is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael Caldwell hereby proclaim March the 12th, 2012, as Girl Scout Day in Ogden City, and recognize the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA. We express appreciation for the leadership, self-esteem, and character-building Girl Scouts provides through its dedication and service to girls and women of Ogden and throughout Utah. We encourage residents to become involved in the activities planned to celebrate this significant event, passed and adopted on this 28th day of February, 2012. Mr. Chair, I propose that we accept this proclamation.
Second.
We have a vote from Councilmember Van Huser and a second from Councilmember Gockner to adopt this proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's have representatives come up, and then we'll have all the Girl Scouts who are So girls, we want you to come right up here in front. We're going to have your leader to stand right here in the middle with the proclamation, and we'll have probably girls on each side of her.
Mic step down.
Okay.
Courtney, that looks like a boy scout, you know, for him.
When do the cookies come?
They're here. They're here. In my trunk.
Thank you, girls. And at this time Kathleen, and we would love to hear from your leadership for just a moment, if you have something to say.
I'd like to have something to say.
Such an honor to be presented this proclamation and have you read about the wonderful things that have happened over the past 100 years. And we have such a special connection to Ogden because Mrs. Echols had the courage, confidence, and character to gather girls in her home in 1920, and that's where Girl scouting began, in Utah.
Thank you.
We, one of the most important things girls learn about in Girl Scouts is serving in their communities, and you all exemplify that important value here by serving the community of Ogden. So we love having them see what you do and understand how important your work is, so that when they're working in their communities as they grow up and become wonderful citizens, that they exemplify your values as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you so much again, and I would like to invite everyone to the Echols Community Arts Center during the month of March to see our Girl Scout Heritage Display. You can learn all about Girl scouting, and again, because Bertha Echols was unofficially our first troop leader, we chose to host our display up here in Ogden, because this is where it all began for Utah. So I hope to see you all up at our Heritage Display this month. So thank you so much, and thank you for your support, and enjoy your cookies.
And thank you. Well, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of the work session of September 6, 2011, and minutes of the regular meeting of December 20, 2011. First is Councilmember Stevens.
Yes, Mr. Chair, those minutes are correct.
And Councilmember Wicks.
Thank you, Chair Garner. Those minutes are correct to the best of my recollection, and I would make a motion that we approve the minutes outlined in Items A and B.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Stevens to approve these minutes. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. These minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is a common consent, the amendments to the Annual Action Plan and Five-Year Consolidated Plan 2010 through 2015, and the Annual Action Plan Amendment, Budget Opening, Proposed Ordinance 2012-11, to set a public hearing for March 20, 2012. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd make the motion to.
Yes, thank you.
Adopt those.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Wicks to set the public hearing for March 20, 2012. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that correction. Next on the agenda is reports from the Planning Commission. First is the indoor climatized personal storage units, and I think we have a presentation from Mr. Montgomery.
Mr. Chair and members of the council, you have before you recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding a petition that had been filed to allow indoor storage units in the C2 zones and also the C3 zones. And just to give you a little background on this petition, Mr. Todd Stewart filed the petition and it was reviewed with the Planning Commission back in October of last year. And the purpose of the request was to allow use in the C2 zone in a building that he owns on 32nd and Harrison. Of, there's a, in the building he has, there's a back portion that has frontage actually on Healy Street, which is at a lower level than Harrison Boulevard, so there's a basement in this building.
Brinker, isn't it?
Yeah, Brinker, I'm sorry, I said Healy. And that, to allow a reuse of that space, it had winter dairy in it many years ago and has had various other uses, this was an item he felt that may be advantageous to be located in that area. The existing zoning ordinance does not allow any type of warehousing, personal storage in the C2 zone. It's first allowed in the C3 zone. And so his petition was to specialize the use, other than just warehouse, to call it indoor climatized storage, which had some additional criteria than general warehousing. This limited to the being climatized, so there's heating, air conditioning in the space. There's individual units inside a main building, rather than access from outdoor to each unit. So that's some of the distinctions of the proposed language of the indoor climatized space that he's petitioned. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission first looked at this in October. You'll notice the recommendation didn't take place until January. There were discussions that took place among the commission about the use. There's some work sessions that were held, trying to come to grips about the idea of, do you allow something like this in the C2 zone? And if you do, what type of provisions do you put on it so it is not the same as in the C3 zone? How do you limit and control it so that it does not take up valuable commercial space, which has more of a generation in terms of tax revenue, activity, people coming and going, and that other businesses can then play off of? And so the commission spent time discussing these matters in the three months that they reviewed this item. The final conclusion they came to in their recommendation to you was to limit this type of use to a C2 zone with the condition that it's only in buildings that are 90,000 square feet or larger. There are only five of those in the C2 zone. That it can only be a third of the total square footage of the space, again, trying to deal with the idea that if an entire building was dedicated to this, again, it creates almost a dead space in the commercial zone. And the third was that it be in a basement, in order so that it's not the main use, it's not a major attraction, and there's only one building that has a basement of those five, and that's the one on Harrison Boulevard. As the commission discussed this back and forth, their concerns, as I mentioned, were the impacts uses have for general retail. There is discussion also with the commission about the Mount Ogden Plan. And again, while this is a text amendment that is citywide to any C2 zone, the concern was that with this individual building and comments in the Mount Ogden Plan about this being a future mixed-use area and a transportation hub as far as along any transit line, that would this limit that ability to take place? And so there was discussion back and forth with the commission. You'll notice the sending vote was based on that idea, that they felt this was not consistent with that concept. In the Planning Commission's recommendation to you, they do recommend approval of this and to make this amendment in the C2 zone and also apply in the C3 zone. So if there were the specialized indoor climatized units, they would also have that same limitation in the C3 zone in terms of not being the entire use of a building. So the recommendation before you tonight from the Planning Commission is to approve the proposed amendment. As I mentioned, it was not a vote that was easily taken, that took three meetings to get to that point. And again, some of the concerns that were raised, I mentioned also, that you still need to consider also as you look at this petition and request. Do you have questions of me?
Okay, thank you.
The petitioner is here also.
And Mr. Stewart is here, so why don't we have Mr. Stewart come up?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, thanks for a couple of minutes. I do want to say thanks to the Planning Commission and the Planning Department for working so hard to make it happen. They told you how many meetings they went through. They're just working hard to try and find a way that it met everybody's needs in the city and, you know, didn't take advantage of it. We feel it serves a special purpose for the neighborhood, since we have apartment buildings to the south, multifamily to the west, and they, you know, have minimal storage for things that, you know, this will provide it for, but not just, it's climatized, meaning it's inside, and we think the impact to the neighborhood is minimal, because, you know, the building will still basically look the same, except for the conditions that are put on us, you know, when we apply for the conditional use permit. We think it fits within the city plans, and we hope you'll approve it.
Mr. Stewart, what are your plans? Will it be built units? Will it be metal containers? What type of, what will it look like?
Well, it could be either way. We had a contractor that wanted to make containers inside pods on two levels, but he got tired of waiting, so we, so it'll either be, you know, individual units built, you know, with, or it'll be pods, depends on what contractor we find to come in and do the work.
Some of the improvements, I understand, is the air conditioning would have to be improved in the, in the building. Is that correct?
Well, the building is pretty temperate, you know. It doesn't get much colder than 50, nor hotter than 70. So we just thought, we hadn't talked about air conditioning before. We thought the building was pretty suitable for that because of the fact it's buried in the hillside.
And Mr. Stewart, you've tried to bring other businesses in here too, and if I understand correctly, you know, other things that haven't, that have been there for a short period of time and then haven't stayed, or are you looking at other options besides this, or anything else for the mixed-use plan for this building?
We'd like to have retail down there, and we took the C2 zoning and went through it and marked every possible use we could have in there, but it just hasn't happened. We tried the soccer league, and, you know, that didn't work. We had a small church in there, and, you know, they were asked to leave, and we got kind of frustrated. We had somebody, you know, a couple of years ago that was interested in the center and doing this thing with the basement, and so, but that, you know, never came to be. 2008 happened, and they went by the wayside. Yeah, we've, we've had other people want to do things, but, you know, being on the backside of the center long Brinker is just not good retail space.
Are there any security systems you'll put in the building?
Yeah, there would be. There isn't now, but there would be security systems in.
What kind of hours would the storage unit have?
That'd be part of the conditional use permit, you know. They could put restrictions as to when people could come in. What we're anticipating is that, you know, after about 10 o'clock at night, people couldn't come in, or 9, you know, whatever we establish, and after a certain hour in the morning, that, you know, it's closed up and locked and unavailable to people.
And there is access to the basement, to these pods, without going through the top or through the main floor, I guess?
Oh, you mean through the top?
I guess through the, I guess these are in the basement.
Right, well, it's a walkout.
A walkout basement?
Since it sits on the hillside, the whole bottom level is walkout. Smiths, when Smiths Food King was there, that, part of it was their warehousing below, and the trucks would pull up to it. In fact, you know, the whole place is allowed to be warehouse-based now, you know, as an accessory to the tenants above. And, you know, and that, that kind of goes on, you know, if we have a tenant that needs it. But, and this is, I think, even better than that, because we won't have semis pulling in and out of, you know, right now is an accessory use. If Carl Super Saver wanted to warehouse their goods below, they could have semis coming in and out along the neighborhood, and that won't be happening if this, at least I assume we won't have a semi that wants to pull up and unload into mini storage.
Any other questions?
Are semis allowed in and out of there now? They are, they are currently?
Yeah, they could.
They could.
There's a loading dock.
There's a loading, I know that, but I just didn't know under this zoning if that was still allowed.
Further comments?
Well, I took some time and walked around there over the weekend and kind of looked to the neighborhood to the west. It looks like there's a lot of investment with some townhomes that have been built recently, and some movement there with the residential neighborhood.
Development, yep. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay. Do we have a motion? Or we can receive public input on this item at this time? Any public input? Regarding this issue? Okay. And then a motion?
I guess I'd like to make a comment. I think it's always an incredibly delicate balancing test between economic prosperity now and a future vision to guide Ogden in the direction of supporting a mixed-use commercial center and possibly a transit stop. And with that in mind, I would make a motion to not adopt this ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to not adopt proposed ordinance 2012-12. This is a roll call.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, before you vote, typically if you're not in agreement with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, you also articulate the reasons, the justification for not, that would be helpful, I think, before you.
Okay, I can make a couple more comments. I served on one of those Mount Ogden community planning groups, and this does not meet the objective of the Mount Ogden Community Plan, which includes redevelopment of both sides of Harrison Boulevard. That Harrison Plaza is envisioned as a mixed-use center in the Mount Ogden Community Plan and a potential stop for transit.
I agree with Councilwoman Gockner on that, is that I believe we need to look and see what is best for not only the community plan, but also the future of Ogden in that aspect there. We can better use the property there.
I feel very strongly too, that I think the Mount Ogden Community Plan has been laid out. We spent a lot of time and energy, the council as well as the community, and I feel very strongly that it should stay within the boundaries of what we've already established.
It seemed real, from the way it was crafted, that the Planning Commission was making this zone change for one particular location and petition. And in light of weighing it against the Mount Ogden Community Plan and the Involve Ogden General Plan, neither one of those seems consistent with, with this ordinance.
I would agree with that, and, you know, I have some concern about the potential impact it would have with the residential properties to the west of the property that are there now and that are being built. I just think that it's probably in the best interest to deny it.
I, I agree that a lot of time and effort and thought and planning went into the Mount Ogden Community Plan, and I do think that we have those plans for a reason, and we want to stick to those plans and stick to those guidelines. I would like to thank Mr. Stewart for trying to, to create something there on that piece of property, and hopefully we can find something so that building doesn't sit vacant. property, and hopefully we can find something so that building doesn't sit vacant.
Thank you. And we have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to not adopt this ordinance, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. And I'll echo what Mr. Blair said in that we really do hope that you can do something with this property, Mr. Stewart, that currently exists with the zoning that is there, and, you know, would really love to see things move forward with the Mount Ogden Plan and with you being a part of that. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the amendment to the Echols Historic District for Home Occupations, proposed ordinance 2012-10, and Mr. Montgomery.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we have a petition before you tonight that also the planning commission reviewed regarding an existing ordinance that applies to the Echols Historic District, and that is that it would allow, under the present ordinance, outside employees as a home occupation. When this ordinance was developed back in 1984, the petitioner, Mr. Stockdale, who at that time owned the Wattis home at 2540 Echols Avenue, had an accounting firm, and in order to try to keep maintenance of the building, he felt he needed some outdoor, outside employees. And at that time, the district was in a shaky transition where three buildings had had commercial uses in them before, and trying to create the district as a residential area has felt that this would be a good option to keep more of the residential feel because there would be a homeowner there as a home occupation and allow them to have outside employees to help have the income to maintain the building. Since that time, when the ordinance was created, it was done in such a way that it applied to only two homes in the Echols Historic District, the Wattis home and then also the Echols home on the corner of 2508 Jackson. As time has passed, the Echols Historic District has solidified as a residential area. The... Mr. Stockdale passed on. The home was actually purchased by the Wattis family, and they went back and reinvested in that home and to bring it back to the way it was when it was originally built. And so it now serves as a single-family residence. So at this point, the neighborhood felt it would be important to continue to allow that residential feel to be established and keep the role of the residential area of the Echols District, and that this ordinance no longer served a useful need, that its time is up, the key player of that was no longer there, the home is now rehabbed and protected. And so the petition that came from the neighborhood was to revoke this special exception to home occupation. Normally, a home occupation is one where the owner of the home can have an office use in the home but no outside employees, and that's allowed in any residential zone, but the main use is as a residence. And so by this petition removing this provision, it'd just go back to whatever the other residential neighborhood has as a home occupation provision, which limits it to people who live in the home, not any outside employees. As the planning commission reviewed this, they felt that this indeed was consistent with the general plan of the city, the directions that we've been trying to take in our historic districts of keeping them residential and the residential historic districts and not having commercial aspects in them. One of the questions I know that was raised in the council staff report was the idea that could... The other provisions exist in the zoning ordinance that allow reuse of historic buildings take place here. Those reuse provisions are only outside historic districts, so those are only for individual buildings. So Jefferson and Echols will not be able to take advantage of those uses. Those are limited only to individual buildings outside those districts. So as the planning commission reviewed this, they felt it would be appropriate to make this change in the ordinance, to eliminate this provision, and they recommend to you that this petition be approved that eliminates the outside employees for home occupation in the Echols District.
I just want to make sure I understood one thing you said, outside of that district. So the rest of the city residential zones, you can have a home business, but you can't employ anyone in the home. Is that right?
Can't have any outside employees. The people who are in the business have to be the people who live in the home.
Got it. Okay.
Questions for Mr. Montgomery? Okay, thank you. And is the petitioner here, Connie? So, Mrs. Cox, if you'll come up here.
Hi, my name is Connie Cox, and I live at 2532 Echols Avenue. And I just want to reiterate what Greg said. Anything that the city can do to help us maintain the single-family owner-occupied buildings in the district and the East Central District as a whole would be, I think, of great benefit to the city. And so we just feel like this cuts down on the transancy of the neighborhood.
Any questions for Mrs. Cox? And at this time, we'll accept public input regarding this amendment.
My name is Rufus Lowmeller at 2555 Echols. Just wanted to echo Connie's comments as well as the overview by Greg Montgomery. As a resident of the district, we really do want to try to maintain the fabric of it as a single-family homes, and we do have some issues with petty theft in the neighborhood, and just trying to minimize the transancy as, if at all possible, so urge you to support it and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make the comment that I want to thank the neighborhood for all your efforts to energize and enrich the neighborhood. You've done a lot of work, and with that, I would make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to adopt this ordinance. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. Thank you. And I would like to second Councilmember Gockner's. This historic district, Watermelon Park, if we want to call it, holds a very tender spot in my heart. I was raised in this neighborhood and just, you know, I'm very pleased with what you're doing in the neighborhood and what's being done to maintain the historic nature of this area, so thank you. At this time, we'll accept public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors.
My name is Virginia Hernandez Reza, and I am here because, as you look on your agenda, right here it says number six, common consent amendment to the annual action plan and the five-year consultation plan, and also the annual action plan amendment. We did pull up this information, and this information just recently came out. I wish that this information would come out weeks before or two weeks so when we can look at this, when we come to the city council, we can have a better perspective what to say, but so I'm going to try and say what I need to say really quick within three minutes. My concern and our concern is this, and I've been saying this many times as I come to the city council meeting, in fact, since 2005 and up through the years, I've been in involved with the city council with our concerns. When I say "we," I... It is the low-income community. As you know, if you read these plans, these consultation plans, well, some of you have not been here since 2005, we've got all the consultation plans. Our concern since way back then, and you're new, some of you, and some of you aren't, is that this consultation plan, what we have looked through, and when I say "we," we've already had a community meeting this Saturday involving this consultation plan, how it is affecting us, the low income, that these federal grants monies are coming to us to have a better community, to get better businesses, to get a home. What has happened, though, is through the years, and we've got all this documentation since then, is that your community advisory committee, I think you've heard me say this many times, is we have asked who is on these committees. We do know who are some of them, but we don't know who the complete people list is. Our concern is that some of these committee members has, through the years, has been unfair to the rest of the community, and I am saying this as a factual thing, unfair, and also, have you heard up there at Washington, D.C., inside trading? It starts from the top, it can also go down to the local issues. We know that has been happening since 2005 because I am so upset with this because many of the people that I interact with as a grassroots activist and organizer since two... A long time. We have been... We have not been included, this segment of the community, to get better homes under this... Get better homes and businesses. We did go through the years. We brought people to these establishments, the community development and those... We didn't see people. We went to them, and they would... They absolutely refused to work with us, but they did bring in their friends there and a segment of part of the community, which was the undocumented people. We have all that documented. So what I'm saying is that how in the world can we get that current list? Because we want to see it, and what we see on there, and if they're the ones that have been on that list since then, we are going to bring it a political issue and have them taken off. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, might be well to note to Ms. Reza that this is for a public hearing for March 20th, and that might be a good time to come back and express...
Thank you. We'll have some people, you know, come... Thank you. Further public comment?
I forgot one part. As a neighborhood, we're very concerned about vacation rentals by owners, and as... At the planning commission, we brought this issue up, and we would just like the planning commission, you, the city council, I don't know who exactly, would be reviewing the use of that in our city because, again, I think it just promotes transancy in our central neighborhoods. And I don't think there's an ordinance on the books right now to... That addresses this, so I think we should look into it.
Okay, thank you. And further public comment?
Rufus Lowmeller, 2555 Echols. I too would like to second Connie's comments that there should be something about vacation rental by owners. I'm not opposed to it in concept at the right location, such as near a resort or something like that, but I don't think it's a place in our inner cities where we're trying to have single-family home dwellings where you've got people that can come in and out of the neighborhoods, there's no record of them. There's lots of impacts, I think, to that that I hope that you'll take up and at least revisit that or take it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments from administration?
I have nothing at this time.
From council staff?
I do not have anything either. Thank you.
Okay. Council members?
I'd just like...
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Is the vacation rental something we could request adding to your big, long list?
We are already doing that. One of the motions the planning commission made as a separate motion was for us to look at that, and we're looking at revisions to the residential zones as a project this year, so that's one of the things we've included in that.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
And I do know it's going... I've come across a website that lists vacation...
There are.
I mean, it is going on in the community. I don't know if you're familiar with that, Greg. I can make sure you have it.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? I just have one, and it was a very nice kudo for Ogden City today. I heard it on the radio, and that Ogden's in the top 10 cities in the nation for family vacations, so it really...
Family-oriented spring break. Family being the operative word there.
No pressure for Disneyland now.
If gas keeps going up, you can... You only can be able to afford to do your spring break here.
So I thought that was very nice for our city and a nice honor. Okay. And next is adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hare and a second from Councilmember Wicks to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This is a reminder that there is a council work session that will be held immediately following the city council meeting. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the fiscal year 2011 financial audit and consolidated annual financial report.
Cookies.
The FY 2012 quarterly capital improvement plan and the report ending December 31, 2011, and the quarterly financial reporting. Thank you.